Hey everyone, welcome back to the channel or welcome in if you're new. I'm Rachael Sims and welcome back to our Sims 4 Forever world. Big changes are happening in our town. Veronica, our hardworking town mayor and Kenji, the towns maker have just taken the next big step. They've moved in together, made things official, and they've got a baby on the way. And this episode, we'll be prepping for their new arrival, running the town hall, having the grand opening of our electronics store and even holding a big town meeting. But there's just one problem, Kenji isn't exactly excited about becoming a dad. Veronica's thrilled, but will Kenji come around before the baby is born? Let's dive in and find out. So Veronica and Kenji are living together now. Um, I have so much planned for their round. So Kenji went and got himself a loan and we will be playing his electronics store today. So the electronics store is currently in the garage. Let me show you guys it. So here is our garage electronics store. Um, so I did have Kenji take out a small loan for this and then that loan packet disappeared. Um, so we will be getting another loan when we can and just cheating the funds away. But he used the funds to buy all of the electronics for the electronics store. So it's currently in his garage right now. And then here is the business details. Um, so the electronic store is called Smart Living Solutions. And it is a local electronic superstore specializing in a variety of electronics, including computers, gaming supplies and televisions. We also offer refurbished appliances and handmade wooden furniture. We are your one stop shop for smart living solutions. Um, and then here is the business activities, browse and buy items and be friendly. That's all the activities we have right now. It's, it's, it's a small room in a garage. It's not much to do in it yet. Um, and then the interest fee there is none. And then the price modifier is 50%. So for anything that's like in a garage, it's like this, I like to keep the prices low to 50%. And then once they move to another outside retail lot, then I will increase that price to a hundred percent, but for now we'll keep it at 50. And then the target customers are young adults, uh, teens, adults and elders. So we will be playing, opening that business shortly. Um, it's 6:00 AM right now, so I'm gonna have Veronica cook something for our grand opening and then Kenji can work on his woodworking skills. I think we are out of wood. Yes, looks like we are out of our wood. Yeah, that's sculpture. So we'll have him go out to the forest and gather some more wood. Uh, so I'm just gonna click on here and then have him go to the forest to get some wood. And then I'll have her make something to eat. Cinderella sound really good, so let me have her make some Cinderella's. Well, she's cooking. Let's take a look at her once. So she wants to host a perfect date. We definitely don't have time for that. Skill up. We definitely have time for that. So let's, uh, pin that. And then she also wants to get engaged to Kenji. Ooh, let's take a look when he gets back to see if he wants to do that. Alright, the Cinderella's are done for when we have the business open. Uh, so I am going to have Veronica start a new hobby. And that hobby is painting. And let me get rid of this book. Alright, so Veronica is going to paint. And the reason I'm gonna have her do this is because we can sell the paintings at the town hall. Um, town halls usually have like a lot of artwork and stuff like that. At least that's what I'm going off of from Parks and Recreation. Um, so I thi- I thought it would be cool for her to, uh, sell paintings there. That's what I usually have. The town hall is kind of like an art gallery. Um, and there's paintings, uh, that she will make, uh, be for sale there. Alright, and let's see. We see that Veronica is a perfectionist. They take longer to craft things, but tend to craft items of superior quality. Let's take a look at this one. This is poor. Uh, okay, so I don't think she, uh, crafted anything superior in that one. That's okay. Looks like we have a relationship change between Juan and Ivy. They're trying to work it out. Oh, and Kenji's back. So Kenji's back from chopping wood. Let's see, and he has 14 bundles of wood, so that's great. Uh, let me look at his wants. He wants to cheer someone up. He wants to acquire a childhood formative moment. Um, and then he wants to complete an event quest. Alright, he does not want to get engaged. So we'll see if he gets that want to get engaged or not, but Veronica is definitely wanting to get engaged. Um, so yeah, it's nine o'clock. I want him to open up his store, so let us go ahead and do that. I'm gonna open it up. And then we'll go here and talk up the business. Alright, I'm gonna have Veronica make another painting. Let's go out here and we'll do another painting. We'll do another small painting. And Kenji is just talking to the garage door, trying to get more people to come. Alright, and let's look at this, uh. Everything does not seem to be going Veronica's way at all lately. It's just been one bad news after bad news. People keep saying, you never know until you try, but never talk about how it feels after trying something new and it's not working out. Veronica can't take another disappointment. It's terrifying and too painful to try again. So she has a new fear, it looks like. So she has a fear of failure. Um, she will start to question whether or not she is capable and have difficulty creating quality objects and struggle at work. Great. Alright, um, so yeah, so she's having a fear of failure right now. We don't have time for Veronica's pyramid right now. Let's get Kenji's business off the ground. Alright, looks like we have a couple Sims in our house, so I will have him go ahead and stop doing that. And I will actually have these Sims go ahead and eat. So let me call to meal and eat. Uh, let's actually have everybody who's here. So he's here. Um, he's here, she's here. We'll call them to the meal to eat. We have a bunch of Sims here eating. Um, I'll let him eat as well too. Let's call, call Troy to meal. Is there anybody else here? I miss. I'll him. Jace, Jace can eat too. And then let's turn on the stereo. I'll put on some easy listening in here. And turn off the stereo. I, I have no idea what they were watching. Oh my gosh, that girl is. It's farting. Oh wow. Alright, these Sims are enjoying these, uh, smooth, easy listening tunes. Alright, uh, we don't want them to dance. We want them to do some shopping because we need to earn some money. Oh, it looks like this broke too. Let me have him fix it. Alright, I'll have Veronica mop that up. Let me have Kenji do some woodworking. It's already like 11 o'clock. Nobody is buying anything. They're just like goofing around. So let me have him craft some furniture. Um, let's try this table. Hopefully that's a lot of money. Turn that TV off. Y'all need to get in here and get to some shopping. Alright, this is another one of our toxic couples that are always having issues. Alright, nobody has bought anything yet. They're having fun, but they are not, um, eating or shopping. Maybe I should turn the stereo off so they'll shop. Oh, Lucas is calling us. Sometimes it seems like you just spring up out of nowhere. We've never discussed your childhood before. What sorts of things inspire you when you were a kid? Um, yeah, let's see what she was like when she was a kid. Alright, so for her, I think I will pick the Rand Club as a kid. As a child, the Sim ran their own club and made it the best they could. As an adult, they'll be better at mentoring other Sims by helping them get skills more quickly. Uh, she, she's kinda like always been in charge, so I think running a club as a kid is kind of the perfect formative moment for her. So let's lock that one in. I've never had this before where like nobody is looking at any of the items for sale. Oh, you know what I wanna do? Um, I think this is some kind of weird glitch, so let me go into build mode. Because like nobody's looking at anything and I think I have to like put everything out for sale like right before we open it or something. I, or so let me just take everything off. And I'll put it back on and then see if people start looking at the items for sale. Cause it's like, they're acting like nothing is for sale right now. Alright, let's see if that works now. I don't know why this girl keeps farting up a storm. Okay, we have, finally have a Sim looking at it. So that's what the issue is. You gotta really put out, take the stuff off and put it back on. Um, right before you open the store, when the store is open. I don't know why. It might be a mod conflict. Alright, we finally made some money. Alright, so at least people are starting to like enjoy themselves because they're able to shop now, so that's good. And they're watching him do his woodworking and shopping. It is taking him forever to make this table though. But we haven't sold that much today, so we need to finish this table today. Ooh, we sold something else. Good, good. Veronica's cooking something. Alright, yeah, we can say she likes cooking. Alright, and she made a meal just for herself. That's super helpful. Looks like we sold a few more things, so that's good. I don't see that anybody has bought anything over here though. Looks like she is craving some healthy food too right now. I feel like olive and lemon spaghetti is pretty healthy. Oh, we did finally sell a computer over here, so that's good. And it says, this, this buff is this kindness from Grouch trait. He doesn't have the Grouch trait. And so that's weird. Um, he has good vibes from good trait. And then he loves handiness. Oh, somebody is like, y'all. She's having some fun by herself. In, in the house, okay. Let me, let me give her some privacy. Alright, so I think he's actually finished too. So let me go here and pause it. And let's go here. And we will, oh wow, this table is 1,050 Somolians. So that's great. I'm gonna go ahead and sell this right now. And then I wanna add, put this back over here. I didn't have room for it earlier, but we can add it over here right now. Yeah, we'll let Kenji go to the bathroom because he definitely has to go to the bathroom. I'm not gonna have him make anything else because it's already like six o'clock. And where's she at? Oh, she went outside. Then somebody was, uh, having a little solo fun on the couch. Okay, I think that girl is finally done. We, we need some more shoppers. Here, why don't I have Kenji talk to these customers? And then Veronica. I can actually have Veronica work on another painting. Let me have her do that. Let's do a large one this time. Uh, not this lady hitting on Kenji. Alright, uh, he's definitely gonna say no. I don't think he would definitely like accept anybody's advances in front of his, uh, partner. I'll just say, mating with you doesn't seem to be beneficial. Oh, there's our new townie, Sarah. Alright, she bought something. Kenji is like beat. Let me have Veronica make him some dinner. And then once the, his dinner is ready, I think I'll close up shop for the evening. Alright, I think it's a good time. His, looks like his dinner is ready. He's exhausted anyway. We sold, we have sold a lot of stuff today, so let's see, um. Once I add, what I like to do is I like to add back everything we sold. Um, and then we will look to see how much he has in his funds from when he started. So that's what we will do. Alright, so I'm gonna close Kenji's business for the day. Um, so this is how much it says that we made. We did not make this much money just because we had to buy a bunch of stuff from Build and Buy. Um, so, uh, let's look at his household funds. He has 2275. And when we opened the business, we started off with 79 Somolians. So I gotta do a little bit of math. Two, two, seventy-five minus seventy-nine Somolians. So we made 2,196 Somolians, which is really great, especially because the first few hours, we weren't getting any sales at all. Alright guys, so I am gonna go ahead and open my spreadsheet and add that to my tax tracker. Alright, today is Thursday. We made 2,196 Somolians, so I just add it here. Um, so so far for taxes right now, we owe 220 Somolians right now, but we'll see, um. Uh, which I don't know if we'll play another day with Kenji's business or not. We'll see if they owe any more taxes, so I'm gonna just save that. Alright, so we had a great first day and we are almost to that one star level. So next time we run this business, we should get to one star. Alright, so everybody should be leaving thankfully. Alright, um, and then I'll have Kenji eat his dinner. Alright, and let's turn off the stereo, uh, over here. I'm gonna just make it out. Alright, and she is gonna go take a nap. No, why don't you just go upstairs and go to bed? Let me have her use the bathroom and then I'll have her go to sleep. Alright, good. He fixed that. Um, yeah, and then I'll just have him go to bed. They both had a really long day. I've had them working all day. So yeah, he can go to bed. There, you can sleep over here, Kenji. Oh, look like some of our townies got married. Um, so Lucille and Tucker got married. So it is the next morning and our girl Veronica is awake and ready to face the day. Um, I definitely need to take care of her needs this morning, but let's go ahead and look at her buffs. So she woke up feeling flirty. Um, lover's bliss, every moment near Veronica's partner feels like a symphony of passion. Real treasure, a life filled with friends is a good life and Veronica has made many over the years. Um, she is pregnant in the second trimester. Um, the third trimester is in 24 hours. And then someone lives here, a light sheen of dust enhances the cozy live-in feel of Veronica's home. And then she is feeling sad from her fear of failure. Um, at this point Veronica thought that she would be used to failing at everything, but every day is a new surprise. And disappointed, ah, girl, you need to get over that fear. I definitely need to work on that. And then sparkling clean surroundings. Uh, she is feeling good, inspired by her sparkling clean surroundings. Alright, and then let's look at her wants for today. So she wants to make something of excellent quality. We can lock that in. And then she wants to ask someone who we could definitely lock that into. And then she, of course, wants to get engaged to Kenji. So we'll see if he gets that want today as well. Let me go ahead and take care of her needs. Oh, and today is summer break too. So for this holiday, I have, that they'll have some water fun. Um, and then go on vacation or travel. So they will be, um, we are gonna be, uh, playing with the town hall today. We're gonna be running the town halls. I'm super excited to show you guys that. Um, but let me have her go ahead and make something to eat. Now, girl Veronica is just cooking up some breakfast. And I don't know why Kenji's still asleep. Let me have him wake up. He could come down and get some breakfast. I'll have him go down here and use the bathroom. Oh, girl. I love watching Sims cook terribly. Alright, so breakfast is ready, so I'll have her grab a serving. And then Kenji can grab himself a plate too. Let's see what Kenji wants to today. So he wants to flirt with someone. He wants to chat with a friend for an hour. And then he wants to get engaged to Veronica now too. Oh. Let's see, has he, and I don't think he's changed his mind about having a baby. No, he hasn't. Um, but yeah, let's have him flirt. He's feeling a little, a little good right now. We'll have him flirt. Not getting engaged yet, but we'll see. We'll see if that stays up there. Okay, so that went away now. And now he wants to just ask her out on a date. You don't have time for a date, boy. And now he wants to have a child. So, you guys, since he had this want pop up, I think I am gonna go ahead and change his relationship family thing since it didn't, um, change on here. So I'm gonna go ahead and do that. I'm gonna click on him. I'm gonna click relationship, family and pregnancy. Uh, pregnancy and family, thoughts on having children? I am going to change it since he has the want now to have a child. So he, to me, he has accepted this. He has accepted the pregnancy. He's, you know, he's got that want to get engaged. He wants to go on a date. He's really loving the relationship that he is in. So I'm gonna have him say that he wants to, that he is happy to have a child. So we're gonna change it to that. Um, so now if we click over here, it says he would be happy to have a child. So that is great news for him. I am also, now that I have a change though, I am gonna also change it where it'll, um, change spontaneously as well. So he could be happy right now, but then he could also change his mind again. So we're gonna click on pregnancy and family, thoughts on having a children and we'll do randomize his wishes occasionally. Okay, so now I'm gonna lock in this want to have a kid since he definitely has accepted the child. He wants to have a child now. Um, so that is good, you guys. I love that he has come around to this kid, um, that they're gonna have. I'm so excited for them. Alright, so I think, um, so Veronica, it looks like her needs are good now. Yeah, so what I'm gonna do is we are gonna go and spend the day with Veronica at the town hall. So let's go follow them now. So here we are at the town hall and as you can see, it looks quite different. Um, so I have completely renovated the town hall with the funds Veronica had left over from the sale of her home, um, to Sarah. So she had a lot of funds left over and she reinvested it into the town. Um, into, uh, building a great town hall. So hopefully her and Kenji stay together because otherwise she, she's gonna be alone at the town hall otherwise. So, um, but I really love how this turned out. So I did, uh, basically I shrunk down this town hall from another creator. I will be sure to, uh, put a picture up here of what the town hall originally looked like on the outside. I shrunk it down. I deleted everything that was inside so we could afford this lot. Um, and then furnished it. So, um, the outside looks really great. Sorry it's raining, but we're just gonna run with it. Alright, so this is the front entrance into the town hall. So we have a little reception desk right here. And we have seating for people to sit and wait to talk to the mayor. And then right next to the reception area, this is the mayor's office, this door right here. And, and here is the mayor's office. So I have her desk with her computer. Um, seating for people to come in and speak to the mayor, a little bookshelf and a little diploma back here. And then over here in this corner, I have this easel and the mayor will be painting, paintings here. Um, and then if I hire any staff too, I might have them paint as well. Uh, but we will be selling paintings in our town hall. That is a way that I, I have it set up that they will earn money from paintings in the convention and visitors bureau, uh, store that I have in the town hall. So let me show you that. Alright, so this is my little convention and visitors bureau store that I have in the town hall. So this is where everything that I will be selling will be here. So over here is, um, a piece of CC that I have. Um, and you can recolor this to clear so you can't see it. But we will hang any of the paintings for sale over here that she paints. Um, and then over here is a shelf where we'll sell other like town merch here as well. And you guys, and you guys, I'm so excited. I made my first Sim CC ever. I wanted to make like, like official clothing, um, that people could come and buy like t-shirts and stuff like that. I feel like you have that in a like li- little tourist store. Um, so this is what we have here. We have both of these shirts I made, uh, one for feminine frames and one for masculine frames. I wanna make so many more. I wanna make one for like every, every world in the Sims 4. Um, so if you guys want something like that, let me know and I can maybe put something like that. And then you guys can add these into your own, uh, rotational save files that you have as well, but I'm super proud of this, y'all. So proud. And then over here we have the register and this is basically just for decoration only and we can't use it, um, in the, uh, yeah, yeah, we can't use it in our small business lots, only in retail, but I wanted to have the register, uh, so it looks more official. And then, and here is where the mayor will come and give speeches. And then, and here is where the mayor will come and give speeches. Town folks can sit here and listen to her give her speeches. Um, we could also host debates and stuff here as well. Um, so I'm really excited to use this space as well. And then of course I also have a public restroom here as well, so people could come in and do their business. And here's a overview of the town hall too as well, so you guys can see the layout. And I do have an empty room over here, um, that I will eventually make into kinda like a conference room where they could get together and the town council can meet and discuss uh, different things that they wanna do to the town. So I will add that eventually, but we ran out of money, so we will be adding that later. Um, and then there's also a second floor too, but it is completely blank right now. But we do have the ability to expand into the upper level as well, but we need to save some funds first to do that. Oh, and let me also mention that I did add the community voting board over here as well, cause I thought a good town hall should have this as well, so people could come here and vote. Instead of going to vote at your mailbox, you can just come here and vote for the different community action plans. Alright, let me get Veronica out of this rain. I'm surprised she's not freaking out right now. And have her, uh, go inside. Or she could just go up here actually, cause we are gonna open up our business. Oh, before I open it up, let me stock these shelves. Alright guys, so I did add some items to the shelf here. So I added the frogs, of course. Um, just because I'm not sure what else I wanna put here right now. But I like to, um, have books and magazines, um, about the town that people can buy here. Um, and this is stuff just from Build By and then as well as tumblers and mugs too that people can buy. And I kinda want to recolor these items maybe as well too and put that Willow Creek logo that we have on the shirts. Or maybe even make my own Willow Creek logo that I can add onto these items as well. I think that would be cool. And I totally wanna put the mayor on the cover of the magazine, cause I feel like she would definitely belong on the cover. Um, but yeah, so those are kinda the ideas of stuff I wanna do to kinda really, um, customize this town hall even more and really make it my own. Um, so yeah, let me know if you guys even wanna see how I recolored it. It was really easy to do. I can make a video on that, um, as well. Alright, so these are the small business activities. We have browse and buy items, be friendly, listen to speeches, and protest. Um, so that's all I have right now. And as our business expands, we can add more as well, but I thought this would be good for now. And then our target customers are young adult, adult, and elders. I don't think teens really go to town halls. So I didn't add them. And then for price modifier, um, I do want to change that. Actually, we'll keep it at fifty percent for now, but then when we reach a star, I think I will raise the price up to a hundred percent since it is a separate lot. Um, but since we have no stars right now, I think fifty percent is good. Oh, somebody just bought something. Oh, she bought our shirt, so that is great. I can have her go ahead and dress the mannequin back into the outfit and have her stop doing this. So this is great. People do love this area with the items that they can buy. That's really great. Oh, I love that they're wearing their Willow Creek merch. Alright, let me have her change him too. So this is, but this is a great moneymaker too. Oh, let me turn on the music too. Let's turn on some, let's turn on some focus music. Cause I definitely need her to, she doesn't really need to interact with people here as much, but I do need her to paint some more paintings. Let me have her paint something. We'll do a large painting. Oh, good, we reached painting level two. And she does have a fear of failure, so maybe we'll get something too to get rid of that. Um, so Ari's calling us and it's asking if I should get to know Ida a little better as a friend. Sure. I don't know why she purchased the same outfit again. So I think after she does this painting, we will give a speech for everybody. Um, and then tonight I also wanna have a town meeting. It looks like somebody else purchased an outfit too, so I definitely need to restock these once she's done. Maybe I'll make her the receptionist. She has a lot of town spirit. She's bought like two of these outfits already. Alright guys, so it looks like she finished this painting. The quality is poor. I, I wonder if it's just cause she has that fear right now. She's gonna continue making poor quality paintings. Um, but we'll go ahead and put it over here. And then this dude is trying to hook up with her. Um, she's gonna be like, you're a moron. Alright, so I had to redress the mannequins. We could add another frog here as well too. They really love the clothing, so I definitely need to make some more varieties, um, of these clothes too, so everybody's not wearing the same outfit. Alright, um, oh, she definitely has to go here. I thought I had her eat before she left and her hunger is fading fast too. I probably should have packed, um, some food. And Carmen wants to hang out. Sorry, we are at work. Um, so I am gonna have her go ahead and give her a speech. And this guy's just thinking about his prank. Looks like they're somewhat listening and these two are just chit-chatting in the back, but and wow, she already has a charisma level of nine. So that is also what I wanna do in that conference room. I wanna add in, um, that dry race board and have her teach charisma, um, cause that is a great way to make money for the town hall. So she is just basically announcing, um, the town is going to have a town meeting tonight and everybody is invited and there's very important announcements in the town, uh, that she will be discussing tonight. So basically this is what this little afternoon speech is. Alright, so she gave a successful speech, so that is good and she is starving. So I might actually close up early today. We did pretty good. We've sold none of our terrible quality paintings. But that's alright. Um, let me put one of these frogs out here and then I will, uh, breed the frogs again. Um, and then I can, I always like to top off any of the merch over here before we leave. And then we also need to restock this outfit. But I'm gonna go ahead and just close the town hall for today. I think we, we, we started off under two thousand and we're at, uh, thirty-two, so that is pretty good. Alright, so I'm gonna close the business for today. Um, so this says we made fourteen fifty-eight simoleons and we're almost back up to our one star. Um, so that's good. Um, but I want to see how much we actually made, so let me put back the items that we started off with. Alright, so we made one thousand two hundred and forty-six simoleons from my calculations of what we started off with. Um, and then how much we actually earned. So I'm gonna put that amount into our, uh, town treasury. So I'm gonna go to my phone and click on SMB Bank. And then transfer from the household funds to the town treasury. And we don't have that much in the town treasury right now. Um, but basically right now, this will be, uh, used to repay the money that we owe and then also add, uh, money to the town hall. So I'm gonna add one, two, four, six. And then submit. So now that is in here. Um, so basically anytime I want to upgrade the town hall or any other, um, town-owned community lots, I will pull the money from the town treasury as well. And then I can also go ahead and add this to my spreadsheet as well. Alright, so here is my spreadsheet and normally for businesses, I will add the funds to here, but I am not going to do that, um, because the mayor right now, none of her money goes to taxes. So I am gonna skip that and just add it to the treasury. Uh, so I like to add it here and then if I do any more renovations to the town hall, I can either just keep the funds in the, in her household account and add it, do the renovations from there, or I can take the money back out from here. Um, but I think this is a good start. So, and I really wanna work off this deficit that we're in. I wanna get out of that deficit, cause there's a lot more businesses. A lot of community businesses that they need. Um, so I would just add that here for now. But like I said, you could just keep it in the household funds and then, um, upgrade the town hall as well if you would like. Alright, so I'm gonna have her go home and get something to eat and then we're gonna come back to the town hall for a meeting tonight. So since Kenji's has been home all day, I'm gonna have him cook dinner for them and let Veronica like relax a little bit. Let me have her just chill out and use the bathroom and watch TV while he cooks. And I don't know why his want to have a kid went away. That happens sometimes when you leave lots, which is annoying, cause I know I locked it in. She's watching public access TV. Interesting. Alright, so I had to make chicken and dumplings. That sounded really good. Okay, so let me have him clean off this disgusting counter. And then he can call, call the meal and eat. I don't know why she's sitting over there though. Uh, probably cause she's watching TV. Here, why don't you sit and talk to your husband? I guess, I guess they're not husband. I'm just thinking they're husband and wife already, y'all. This is my like old married couple of the town already. Even though they're not married yet. Alright, so I'm gonna have them go ahead and head back, both of them. Uh, they're both members of the town, so I'm gonna have them go ahead and go back to the town hall for the meeting. Alright, you guys, so we are back at the town hall and we are gonna have our town meeting. So to do this, all I'm doing is just having a party. So I'm gonna click on the phone, go to Event Planner and go to Plan a Social Event. And then I am just gonna choose House Party and then I'm gonna get rid of all goals and rewards. It's not that kinda party. I'm just using this so I can invite over a ton of people, um, to the town hall. So the host is going to be Veronica. And then for guests, uh, as you can see, I can invite tons of people. So I'm gonna invite probably about like forty Sims. Alright, so I invited about forty something Sims. Um, and then we definitely wanna make sure it's at the town hall, so I'm gonna click here. Um, so since I took off the social events and rewards, we won't get any of that pop up. And then I also have a buffet, so let's serve food. We will serve lunch, even though it's like dinnertime. And then I also wanna hire a mixologist. And then I wanna turn the stereo to like pop music. It's a celebration. It's a town celebration. Um, celebrating the renovation of the town hall and also important announcement. So let's just pick some pop music for this. And then hopefully everybody just comes inside and not stand outside in the rain. And then she changes to her party outfit, which isn't really a, I guess it's fine for a mayor to wear, right? But I want her to wear a suit, so let me change her back into a suit. Um, let's do this white suit. That's really nice. Okay, alright, and then, ooh, I did want to make her an employee, so definitely let's introduce ourselves to her, to Hilda. Let's do a friendly intro- we'll do a cheerful introduction. Alright, what sentiment did we get with her? That Veronica thinks she's weird. But, um, and then she thinks she's annoying. We're still gonna make Hilda our receptionist. So I think now I should be able to hire her. Let's see. Yeah, I can hire her now, so I'm gonna go ahead and hire her. Great, so she is our employee when we play the town hall again. Well, we, when we run our town hall business, I should say. Uh, she will be our receptionist. Is that Hilda already asking for a raise? And there's something I wanted to do too, y'all. So I see Carmen over here and since Kenji has been feeling like really great, doing really great in his relationship with Veronica, he's excited to have, um, the child now. I want him to end things with Carmen. So I'm gonna click here and go to Relationship and then change Relationship to Ask to Just Be Friends. But we'll see how that goes. I mean, she is in a relationship with Grayson, so you'd think she would be okay with it. I love how he's doing it in front of everybody too, but He's doing that covertly. He, he's saying, you know, we're just friends and everything, right? And she's like, yeah. Alright, so it's like ten o'clock. It's crazy late. All the food is gone. Um, I don't know where the bartender went to that we hired. Um, but that's okay. So I want Veronica to go ahead and announce what she was planning to announce. So let's give a speech. Let's give an energized speech. So we've got a packed house in the town hall. Everyone is dying to hear what Veronica is going to announce. Alright, you guys, so Veronica is making a few announcements. So let me pause it real quick. So Veronica is announcing that the town will have a special election to vote on a few topics. So topic one is the town name. So the town has a kind of seedy history and it's not attracting, uh, the, the people to move out here that she would like, the business owners, uh, businesses, established businesses, um, and stuff like that, and even just young people. And even just young people, young people, young families uh coming out to the town to live. So she is suggesting a name change. Um, so the town will vote on a few uh, few ideas that the town council has decided on. Um, as well as they can actually write in uh and suggest some additional names too. So after this video is posted, guys, I will be posting a poll on YouTube. And you guys can vote on what the town's name will be. Uh, since I can't have the Sims actually vote themselves, then you guys can do that. So, um, I will, I will have that posted. And another thing, um, they have received a generous offer from the federal government. So the federal government had, would like to acquire some of the town's land and turn it into federal land and build a military base. Um, so this piece of land would always be a military base. There's no moving it, no nothing. It will always be a military base. But if one, but they have offered to purchase this piece of land for an extreme amount of money, then it's worth way, way, way more than it's worth. Um, so that will help pay off uh some of the town's debt as well as build schools and parks and things like that, that would also attract more people to the town to live. Um, so I also want you guys to vote on that too. Um, so I had an idea to do a military base with Adventure Waits Pack. We, I think we could do it with that pack. Um, and I think that would be a fun twist um to this, uh, something that I personally haven't done before. Um, add a military base to the town. I think that would be cool. Um, I, it would make sense if the town is like really growing if you add a military base there, right? You would have more people coming to live there um and stuff like that. Um, and then as well as it would bring more revenue to the town and also speed things along. Since I cannot uh post uh this world as often as I like, I think it would be nice to be able to get some of that infrastructure uh for the town uh started right away. We could add the train station. We could add schools and parks and stuff like that. So I had that idea, but I kinda wanted to know what you guys thought. So I thought an election would be great. And I also wanted to rename the town as well. So I thought this would be a perfect thing. So they're holding a special election. So um, it will happen after the, this video is posted, the special election. And then it will be in the next video. Um, I will, I will make a holiday election day and they'll come and vote uh here. And they will, the Sims will vote. Um, and then we will, whatever you guys decide is what we will uh implement into the game, so. Uh, so yeah, so this is everything that she is saying to the crowd. She's very excited. Um, so hopefully the town votes to allow the military base cuz it could mean big things for the town as well as renaming the town to Start Fresh, have a fresh start. Now, let's see how the town thinks about this news. Sarah looks skeptical, so does Joe. Other people seem excited. They're all talking and whispering to herself. She seems horrified. But yeah, I, I think a lot of people look excited. Um, Carmen doesn't look too excited. But yeah, I think most of the town folks look excited about this. Alright, oh, and I definitely need to have her go to bathroom. Hope she doesn't pee on herself. Here, let me cheat that a little. I don't want her peeing on herself. And we'll see what the town thought of her speech. Alright, so she gave a successful speech, so that's great. And she still has to pee even though I cheated. Let me have her pee. It does seem like the town is receptive to the changes that Veronica has suggested, changing the name and also adding a military base, selling some of the land and adding a military base. So we will see what the townies think, AKA you guys, in our election, in our special election. Alright, and I need to like clean up. What is Kenji doing? He's like scared. Here, Kenji, why don't you clean up? And it is like crazy late. It's 2 AM, so I'm gonna go ahead and end this um party, AKA town meeting. Yeah, I don't know what happened to the bartender. I should refund my money cuz we never did get the bart- the bartender did not show up. I don't know what happened to them, so. Alright, um, yeah, so let me clean up here. Let me end the party. And then it's crazy late, so um she, they are gonna go to bed when they get home. Alright, y'all, it is the next morning. It's our last day of our rotation with these two. And it, we need to have another party. We need to have the baby shower cuz the baby is gonna be here any minute. And look what this popped up right here. I wanna see what kinda buff they got. Uh, so Veronica got the sentiment that she slept in Kenji's arms. Veronica had a nice sleep in Kenji's arms and grew closer together. Aww. And she also got this close-knit lifestyle at the town hall, at the town meeting yesterday. So I don't know why she got this when she was at a party surrounded by people, but whatever. Alright, I'm gonna have these two get up though. It is early. Let me put some clothes on my girl. She's like super preggers. Alright, um, so let me take a look at her, what she wants to do today. We are gonna be throwing a baby shower though. Um, she wants to practice writing cuz she likes writing. Okay. Um, she wants to ask who, we definitely haven't done that. We need to do that. Um, and she wants to prepare a breakfast scramble. Okay, we could do that. Um, and then for a fear, she wants to become recognized for work. Um, so she wants to click on a crafted object and select Show Off Work. Um, and then if she had a job, if she doesn't, you can click on the portrait to change your activity to ask for performance review. Okay, so we're not gonna do that. This fear, we'll have to work on another time. Uh, so let me have her wake up Kenji and ask him to woo-hoo. Even though she's starving. She's so pregnant. I don't know why they're just now learning each other's woo-hoo interests. I'm sure they've woo-hoed already. Alright, I'll give them some uh privacy. Yeah, so I definitely want to have the baby shower. And then we need to uh do their nursery, which I might have to do off screen. Cuz I'm afraid this video is gonna be so long, y'all. Alright, so let's take a look at their buffs. So she is feeling fulfilled from fulfilling that want to woo-hoo. She had an excellent holiday yesterday, just cuz I guess she went to work. Okay. She was pleasantly satisfied. Um, she is in her third trimester, so she's gonna have this baby any minute. So we definitely need to do that baby shower right away. Um, she has to pee and then she's hungry. So yeah, let me take care of her needs. Yeah, she's so hungry. And then, I don't know why Kenji fell back asleep. Alright, and Kenji wants to make out with Veronica. Definitely lock that in. And he wants to host the perfect date. Y'all do not have time for a date today. And then let's look at his buffs. He had an excellent holiday as well. They're on the same side pregnancy cuz he changed his mind on that. And then good vibes um from being good. And then he was also pleasantly satisfied. Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna have him use the bathroom and take a shower. Um, and then let me have her eat first. So there's plenty of leftovers. There's leftover breakfast too. So let me have her grab that. Okay, so I guess she overcame a illness. Okay. I don't know, is this spoiled? Didn't I tell her to eat breakfast? I don't know why she's doing that. Okay. Clean that up for ya. Alright, let me, and Kenji's gonna grab some breakfast too. Oh, and tomorrow's Father's Day. I wish I could play with him for another day. I could if I wanted to, but uh, cuz he, he may be a father by then. We'll see. I know, he's grabbing that tea too instead of uh eating. Let me have him grab some food. And then I'm gonna have Veronica take a shower. And then I can decorate for this baby shower. Alright, you guys, so I have decorated the living room for the baby shower. Looks super cute. We got some presents, some balloons, some streamers. Um, super fun. Alright, so I'm gonna have her um serve the food. And we will do, we'll just do lunch again. Alright, you, y'all wanna practice making more babies. Um, you do not have time to do that right now. Alright, we'll say I might pick you up on that later, yeah. Alright, and they have a new romance dynamic of steamy now cuz they keep trying to hook up with each other while I'm trying to have a baby shower before she gives birth. Alright, y'all don't have time to woo-hoo. Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna have Veronica throw the baby shower. Uh, so Plan a Social Event and then we'll do baby shower. And I'll check Goals and Rewards cuz we definitely want some uh rewards for this. Alright, so. Alright, y'all, so for the activities, I chose Baby Shower Goals. Socialize, Eat, Have Drinks, Listen to Music, Thank Guests for Coming, as well as Watch TV. I think those are good. And then we'll do it at their house. Here's her cute little maternity uh dress. Uh, they have no idea what kinda baby they are having since there's no doctor yet. Um, but yeah, it's gonna be a fun little baby shower. Okay, so we have guests starting to arrive. Let me turn on the stereo. We'll just do some pop music again. I think that's good for a baby shower. Oh, we just got a baby shower gift from Sarah. Aww. She's so cute. Oh, we got another baby shower gift. Yeah, I think she would definitely like to dance. I love how everybody's giving the gifts to Kenji. But let's talk to Sarah. Thank her for the gift. And share the news that we're pregnant. Oh, we got another baby shower gift from Carmen. Of course, she gave it to Kenji. Alright, you need to thank another guest for coming and talk about the baby with somebody. God, I love the cheese hair. I really need to get rid of the cheese hair. Oh yeah, she's definitely sick. Oh, somebody is like doing stuff. A solo, I think. Alright, I definitely need to like cheat away this illness. Oh, you know what? Let me just have her buy, uh, yeah, I don't cheat. I don't like to cheat away illnesses though. Okay, um, so since there's no town doctor, she can't buy medicine. So, yeah, so she is sick-sick. So maybe I can have her make a tea or something later. Um, but yeah, this is a great baby shower being sick. Oh man, alright, so. Alright, let's thank some more guests for coming. Let's thank Sarah for coming. Everybody's gonna get sick though from this party. It's gonna be the super spreader COVID party. Do we already thank for coming? I don't think so. Let's thank her for coming. I think we know Kenji right yet, or Panya, not Kenji. Let's thank him. I think all these guests ate the food too and she hasn't even gotten a chance to eat. Oh man, alright. I don't think either of them ate. All these ladies keep hitting on Kenji. Kenji is definitely in love right now. He's definitely saying no. Alright, ooh, I could have her eat this. Or somebody takes it. Let me put it in her inventory. Oh, here's some of the gifts. We got one of these thingies. Uh, let's see what Kenji got. Uh, we got a test of the trixera tops. We got some of these things. We'll see at the end what all we got. I could have Kenji thank some guests too. Why not have him do that? Let's thank. Let's thank for coming too. Alright, so we did that goal. I don't know why nobody's having drinks. Let's have Kenji make some drinks, I guess. Usually like people are always in time, so they're making drinks. Let's make drink for, let's make a drink for Lucas. Man, how's Veronica doing? She's good. She's just sitting over here eating. Loving life. She's like, so many presents for me, her baby. Alright, I do want him to give her a gift for sure. Uh, I guess he could give one of these gifts they got from somebody else. We'll do that. Alright, y'all, so our party is now at the gold level. Um, so once she is done here, I'm gonna have her add a gift and then open the presents. And then we get in the party cuz she is so freaking tired. Who knows when she's gonna give birth to this baby? Okay, so then I want them to open presents together, her and Kenji. They're now gonna open their baby shower presents. And then I need to have her get some sleep so she can get better from whatever illness she has that all these people gave her. Alright, so it looks like they got Piano Bars and You, How to Hold a Note Without a Paper Bag. Okay. That's what she got. And then Kenji got One Garden Friend. Okay. Those are not very good baby shower gifts. That's alright though. Alright, y'all, so it is like eight thirty. She is super tired, so I'm gonna go ahead and end the baby shower. Let's end early, yes. Alright, and hosting this party, Veronica actually maxed the charisma level ten. So that is great. And Kenji, he reached charisma level seven as well, so that's awesome. Alright, so this is uh some of the gifts we got. We got one of these playmats, which they definitely need. We got like three of these. So I'll just keep one and sell the rest. Uh, we got this little guy. Um, we got a charisma book, which we don't need. So I'll get rid of, I'll sell that. Um, we got this toy, which we will definitely keep. Um, we got this book about piano bars. I think we could keep that, yeah. We got a pack of flowers. I think I will get rid of that. Um, we got this little toy block. And then this toy also, we'll definitely keep these two. Um, as well as this wood mobile toy as well, which we'll say Kenji made for the baby. And then in our household inventory, we got this toy here. Uh, we got this toy here. We got this garden friend here. We got a bassinet, which we definitely need. Um, so, um, yeah, I, I will uh change this bassinet though cuz I don't like this one. Um, I'll re, well, I guess I could keep it and I'll just change it. And we got this mouse poster here, um, which we definitely do not need. This is like a motivational poster. I'm just gonna sell that. Um, as well as this thing cuz I don't think the baby. As well as this thing because I don't think the baby can play with that. That's like a garden thing, right? Yeah, I'm gonna sell that. I'm gonna sell this charisma book. They don't need. I'm gonna sell. We'll keep this book though. These flowers we can sell. All the toys I'm definitely keeping and then that will keep too as well. Yeah, so it looks like they made a little money from that party. Which is good because yeah, because people do come to parties too and give you gifts as well. So yeah, they did pretty good on that. Alright y'all, um, so I'm gonna let her go ahead and go to sleep because she is so freaking tired. I'll let her go to sleep and I'll let Kenji clean up down here. And Kenji has unlocked a new lifestyle. He is a people person now. Alright y'all, so this is the last day of this round. So let's see if she goes into labor before the end of the round or not. Hope so. Otherwise we're gonna have to wait for this baby. Alright you guys, uh, Veronica has gone into labor. So let me have her use the bathroom. And then we need to wake Kenji up. Alright, Kenji, you need to wake up. It is go time. Where's he going? To read this book? Okay. Maybe you should be reading what to expect when you're expecting or something and not about playing piano. Oh my gosh. Alright, and now Kenji has acquired the piano skill because he was reading that. He's like, I'm stressed out. I need to learn something. Alright, so. Alright y'all, so I do have Panda Samus pregnancy mod in. So let me add the pillows to the bed. Because Kenji will be delivering this baby. Alright, so I have went ahead and added the pillows to the bed so she can give birth here. As you see, we're not fully dilated yet, but we don't got time for that. So I'm gonna shift click her. And go to childbirth settings and then mark give birth immediately. And the other thing I wanna do is childbirth settings. I want her to wear the clothes that she's wearing now while she's giving birth. Wear own clothes during natural childbirth. I wanna click that. Um, and then the other thing I want to do is I also wanna turn off weight gain after birth. I will just go in cast and have her put on a little weight, but it like, it makes you gain so much weight with this if you don't turn it off. So I will adjust this myself. Alright, okay, so that's everything I need to do to give birth. So I'm gonna click here. And now I can click here and have baby. Oh, look at them. Let me get full screen so y'all can see a little better. She's so strong. Having a natural birth at home because there's no doctors in town yet. She is one tough cookie. And hopefully Kenji has read up on how to deliver babies. I think he would. Now that he finally accepted the baby. So I'm so happy he accepted the baby. Alright guys, so we just had our first baby and it's a girl. Yay. I'm so excited. Alright, now I have to figure out what name I wanna give the baby. Alright, Veronica's a little bougie and, and so is Kenji. So. And I also wanna do right now, I wanna do just the names in alphabetical order, just so I kinda don't use the same, like have five people's names start with A. I think just doing that's the easiest. So that's how I'm gonna do it right now. And if you guys ever wanna become members, I will let you help me name these babies that are born in town. That we have in this game. If you guys wanna become members, that's one of the perks. So let me see what names I want for, what name I want to name this girl. Alright you guys, so I have decided on a name, uh, and the name is Amelia. Amelia and then Kenji's last name is Tanaka. She is definitely giving Kenji the, or yeah, Veronica's definitely giving, uh, the baby Kenji's last name. Alright, and here we go. There's our little girl. And let's see the rest of this childbirth. Oh, look at them. Oh, look at them. They're so excited to be parents. Look at their little baby. It's so cute. Y'all, I don't know why I'm so invested. But I am. It's so cute. It is 5am and I am going to end this round, but I need to update my spreadsheet first. So let me go ahead and do that. Alright, so here we are in our spreadsheet and there's a couple of things I need to do. So I need to, um, add 750 simoleons, which is how much that town meeting costs back to the treasury. So let me do that. Alright, so now our deficit is 23,267. Okay, um, and then I need to go to our tax tracker and see how much we owe in taxes. So the only income we accounted for this round is, um, Kenji's income. Uh, so the, so for the mayor, I do not take taxes for a while. Actually, I never take taxes for the mayor. I just put, uh, some of their money back into the town treasury. That's what I do for the mayor. Once they start earning a good living from the town hall, then I will, um, add that to the treasury. So, um, I just have, the only income we have is Kenji's. So we owe $219.60, but there's no change in Sims. So I round up if it is 50 cents or over. So it is gonna be 220 is how much he owes. So I go back to the treasury tab, go over here. And so for Tanaka, round one taxes, it would be 220. And that we're gonna add 220 back to the treasury. So I am going to, uh, decrease the treasury, um, by 220. And then 23,047 would be how much they are currently in a deficit for now. Alright, so I wanna save that. Another update I wanna do is I wanna add the baby here. Inserts and then that adds that down here. And then let me move Kenji back up. And just copy. And then we're gonna go over here and add the baby. Alright, so I'm gonna add in Amelia's name here. And for her role, I'm just gonna do second generation. And then she is a female and that's all there is to add for her because she, oh, I do wanna add her age too. So let me add that she is an infant. And that's all there is to add for her. And then I can go back to the game. So that's a wrap on our lovely couple right here. And Kenji's going back to bed. And she's like, that was rough. Alright y'all. So thank you so much for watching today's episode. Make sure you head over to the post tab on my YouTube channel and vote in the special election. The results will be announced in the next episode. And don't forget to hit that like, subscribe and hype button. It really helps my channel out and gets it in the algorithm. And share this video with your Sims friends. Also, I have opened up channel memberships. If you'd like to join, it's a great way to support the channel. And you'll get special perks like naming, future sellers and babies like we just did in today's episode. As well as special members content. Thanks again. Until next time. Bye.